Well, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to our guests. Whoever's here is a guest, whoever's here is our employees and members of ORSC. So, anyway, public hearing. I will open the floor for anybody who have any comments on Balaon number 1464, pass seventeen, so Development Plan Amendment. Anybody here have anything to say pro or con in public hearing?
We didn't receive anything.
So administration members received anything? Did you guys hear anything down there at all with anybody that might not have wanted to talk to us?
Did not.
Okay. Well, what we normally do is we leave it open for about five minutes to see if somebody wants to come, but if you two wish to address council, well, we're waiting to see.
I can fill your airways.
Sure. The floor is yours. You know, I think everybody knows Gavin, unfortunately, some of us don't know your counterpart that needs to be here.
Ian, yes. Ian is your new planner. He took over approximately in January, so he's been working. This is my last official unofficial duty for you guys, so just kind of clean up on this bylaws. The bylaw itself is a general update to your bylaw. It is not a radical policy shift in what you do as a municipality. It is a three-pronged update, I'll say. The South Saskatchewan Regional Plan is part of it. It's formed part of what you're required to do to come into compliance with it, is to make sure that your planning documents are in align with that document. That has been done. Twenty sixteen census data has been utilized and put into the tables of the document as far as population and demographics and things like that. As well as, we have recognized much of what you've done over the past years since the two thousand document was written. You've taken on policies, written other documents, adopted other documents like historic resources, work that you've done with the county and the other municipalities. Those things are reflected in here. So renaming of things, how many fire trucks you have, all that kind of stuff goes into the document. As well as getting you a new cover, get your new logo on there, just a general refresher. And so, in the document itself, there, you'll see that there is a general, I guess, update to all the tables. Some of them got some color. Some of the maps certainly did get some changes reflective of what the desires of the community are as far as transportation, land use growth directions and those types of things. As well as, some of the information was truncated down. The transportation section was page after page of written verbiage referring to all the highway counts. Some of that stuff now goes into the appendix. So if you're interested in that kind of data, you can turn to the appendix and read it there. As well as the SSRP is in the appendix, your transportation policy sits in the appendix as far as how you're treating your streets and what your rules are regarding your streets. The policy section remains much the same. There were an addition of general policies, and most of those general policies that were added to the document stem from the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan. So efficient use of land, historic resources, density, all of these questions that may have not been answered or asked in your previous document had to be addressed to come into alignment with that South Saskatchewan Regional Plan. So for the most part, those are the changes to the policy sections. And then certain things that the committee did put together and put in front of me were also addressed. So if there was thoughts that, oh, the language on this has changed, or we do this, not that, those amendments also were pushed through the body of the document and then reflected in the policies of the document. So that is my five minutes. Hopefully.
Five minutes.
Any questions?
Yeah, most of us, you know, all of us, I should say, had an opportunity to read, you know, fortunately, you guys that took the document and went through it, like you said, page by page, or, you know, and made the alterations or suggestions and changes that came from the information that came forward. But is there anything else that's gleaming that, I mean, this one that, you know, we're proposing for the, for the changes to that land use for the solar, it of course won't be implemented into this policy, so then we'll just have to make an amendment to it, I guess.
And that is true, both with that process and your intermunicipal development plan that you'll be embarking on with the county. Once that plan is done, again, this is a living document, you will be amending, and I encourage you to amend as these things come online, and perhaps we wouldn't wait fifteen years to get out of it. Certainly when those documents are done, they should be reflected back through the document as quick as you can. A simple amendment just comes to council like any amendment, and you just adopt it as you see fit.
So the one with the joint use one with the county, it's just going to be in our fringe areas and...
Correct. And this document alludes to your fringe area. It carries for some of the working policies that you already have in place through practice or through regard for the county and yourselves. The formal process then will be entered into to formalize a lot of your thoughts, your growth directions, and see where the county takes you. They may disagree, they may agree. That then will set policy, and again, you'd have to reflect that in this document.
So that's what most municipalities are doing, I guess, with one that's...
No, that they're mandated in the frameworks as well, once those things are required. They'll have a certain timeframe to get those done, and then see how it works out. Again, those will be living documents as well as this thing, so it'll constantly be in flux and change.
Yeah, I guess we're very fortunate that we both municipalities participate with you. I assume that probably is going to be kind of different, where there's going to be two municipalities that participate that have two different organizations that...
Yes, we're already into that in Tabor.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay.
So because they have their own staff, their own viewpoints, they sometimes...
The Towne Tabor or the MD?
The Towne Tabor and the MD entering into their intermunicipal process, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Because we don't do the Towne Tabor, they have their own viewpoints on things. At times, we walk in a certain direction and maybe slightly skew us on.
No, I was just curious of how that process worked for, I mean, like I said, you know, whether it's fortunate or not, fortunate, whichever way it is, I mean, because there's always a difference in views from, you know, urban to rural, you know.
Certainly having gone through it in Pincher Creek, I know that I am representative, if I am your planner, I am representative of you, and I'll make harsh arguments where I'm told to make harsh arguments. And I wouldn't be afraid to challenge your planner. If you feel that strongly about something, put him out there, make sure he gets those points across. Don't, you know, sit there in your position thinking that if it's a good planning idea, let him push it, and we'll see what happens. So I've been on that side, I've made arguments that the town is like, why is that guy so nasty? But it's because I'm trying to stand up for your beliefs and trying to get your breaks across.
Yeah, no, we've had great working relationship really over the years with the county, so I don't think it's going to be as big. You know, unfortunately, I kind of feel sorry for the county, because, you know, now they have to do, you know, six or sevens theoretically, and so, well, I suppose even more because they have to do around them, like we and all the other ones that, you know, fall into there. So we're fortunate, we only have to do theoretically one negotiation back and forth.
I think they're doing twelve.
It is twelve for the county, okay. So, yeah, so I mean, in a way, we're fairly fortunate that way, but I'm sure that there's going to be some language that's going to be normal to all of them, and there's some language, I'm sure, that's going to probably be a little bit different. Okay. Any other questions? I've been doing all the effort here, but any questions for these two gentlemen?
Who asked questions before?
Yeah, the committee did a great job, thank you.
No, that's great, too, you know, and we appreciate what the committee did with you guys to be able to bring it forward and, you know, incorporate the additions and deletions, I guess, you know, Nancy and the staff to make it, to move forward, so we appreciate that. And I think we more than wasted or invested our, invest our, our ten minutes here, so obviously, and if there's anybody else wishes to speak on before or opposed to the amendments, if not, we will declare the public hearing closed, and you are welcome to stay or you're welcome to leave anytime you wish to spirit out the door.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So declare the public hearing closed.
Not wasting any time either. After twenty, after twenty years, Gavin, that's it?
Okay, well, moving on, we had down of delegation from the System of Resources Limited that was on our agenda last meeting, and they've asked to postpone it, and so it's not on our agenda for tonight.
We did encourage anybody that wants to attend in Stratfor or Olds, they will be having those, or sorry, Okentoks. You can see the scheduling online for that, it's free to go, everyone's invited.
Okay, moving on to adoption agenda, anybody have anything to add to the agenda? Hearing none, somebody wish to move the agenda as presented?
So move.
John? Any question on John's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Ms. Carey, thank you. The previous minutes. Any questions, errors, missions, comments?
I'll send you.
George Lee Muzum? Oh, did you have a question there, Paul?
No.
Okay, George Lee Muzum, any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Ms. Carey, thank you. Okay, unfinished business, there's none on the agenda for tonight. Cash statement, ending August thirty first. Any question on this cash statement?
Are we where we should be?
Yes.
Thank you.
At this statement, we had $260,000 sitting in the account, and we had 1.9 sitting in reserve.
So we're happy.
We're happy.
Could be happier, always.
Yes, we, as you can see, really, the only major change is the $169,000 for the basic municipal transportation grant, and that's because that was spent on roadwork. So that's the only noticeable change. And the MSI capital dropping, the 240 was there.
So move. Okay, Laura Muzen. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Ms. Carey, thank you. Okay, year-to-date. A little longer document. And we have to remember this, it's only for the seven months, so, sorry, eight months, I guess, I'm sorry.
Yeah, till the end of August. Where we basically have the $760,000 outstanding in revenue to claim, and that, most of that is through the utility end of things, and expenses, there's 1.6 left to be...
Has the utility side, have we seen anything, uh, delinquent, since it would be a little higher this go around, like, or people...
I checked with Nancy about that this morning, because we were actually doing the roadovers of docs, and she said it's remained pretty close to the same, so, and the normal roadover.
It was just, you know, from a couple, you know, concerns that a couple of customers or residents have had about, you know, the...
Higher costs.
Higher cost, yeah, concerns. Okay, any other...
I got kind of three little questions. One, recreation, it shows that our budget was $219,000 on expenses, and we spent 125, that's about right, seems like we've got not much of the year left for 40, or 70, 80,000 dollars.
I believe, yeah, that was the programming end. We have some bigger programming that's still coming up.
Revenue looks good. Expenses, seems like we're way down on expenses, I would tell, compared to...
Yeah, well, there's some bigger ones, like the fall fair is a huge expense one, so there are some bigger ones that come through the end of the year.
Okay, second, the pool, that's about standard. I know the pool's closed, but there'll be about 20 grand more in expenses for the year.
Yeah, and you'll see that reflected in the upcoming budget for, and it was chemical costs. Funny, funny thing about pool is rain dilutes the salt, but we evaporated way more than, so...
The arena, that, we just bought a capital item for there, does that come into this budget line?
Yes, yeah, it actually shows in this budget.
So will it jump us over our budgeted?
Yeah, it will, but you bought it to pull $5,000 out, so we'll see a transfer from a capital reserve for that, so...
Okay. Will that, will that come in in August, won't it?
No, it'll be in the next month. It's not in this line item for this month, because it wasn't approved yet.
Now, we probably still have one more heavy expense, water bill coming out yet this year?
Yes.
So do we anticipate this is going to be any negative?
The...
The water bill?
No.
Okay, because I know that the town's still watering, and of course, that comes in a different line than the resident.
Yeah, so the water that we purchase from the Water Commission, we bill back at exactly the same amount, so it'll be a wash.
The town's in that, too, are they not?
They are, but we adjusted our watering schedule, so it shouldn't be any different than it was.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Somebody wish to move Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Ms. Carey, thank you. Correspondents, there's three items there. Any questions on the first one? Comes up later. Any questions on the second one? That one was quite, sorry, pardon.
Was, is this something that Paul should take to the library board?
Sorry, CC to...
It was directed to her, and I informed her of it.
Yeah.
But should you be asking them if they recommend anyone or anything?
Well, this is exactly what we did last year as well.
Okay.
So it's same old, same old. And Liz has it at this point, so she gets to run with it.
Okay, so, because I see it's not ready until December or something.
Yes, December first.
So Library Board will move forward with it?
Sorry?
Library Board will move forward with it?
Yeah, so you're not really looking at us making recommendations?
No.
Okay, I just wasn't quite sure.
Okay, then the Chamber of Commerce and invitation. Any questions on...
John, have they been doing regular meetings at the chamber?
Pardon?
Have they been doing regular meetings for the chamber?
I haven't been getting notices, so I can't really say if they were, because David wouldn't put me on the list. So I went to one just the other night, but it was about fifteen minutes, pretty short.
Okay, any question on any of those three? Somebody wish to file those? Rick? Any questions on Rick's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Ms. Carey. Okay, on the next one, there's the two, the Old Land Regional Services Agenda and the Committee of Badlands. Any brushes on the first one?
Call them back and have them speak to it.
I don't think these guys get to see much of this part of this...
That agenda, no.
Yeah, actually, Chris hinted.
I see that, yeah, they did, so... Okay, no questions on ORSC, so, okay, moving on to the Badlands, any question on...
I think something should be brought up at Tourism again, because I do think this is something they should be pursuing, being more involved with the Badlands, because there are those wonderful day trips and whatnot, they, they do encourage people to take, and I think we could be part of that, so I think that the next meeting, maybe we'll bring that up again.
Yeah, probably wouldn't hurt, I suppose.
I think just because we don't hear from them for so long, and then we hear from them, I think probably what we should do is, is keeping abreast of what they are doing. And I don't know if these minutes go to them or not.
To the Tourism.
Tourism, yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, we don't.
Oh, we never get any of their stuff, so I guess why should we share with them?
We're trying to change that. So we're, so I think maybe that's something we should mention, because I do think we could really benefit from it.
Yeah, I don't, you know, for years that we haven't really participated in, well, I shouldn't say that, I mean, it has been hit and miss that we've participated in the Badlands, you know, over the years, I should say, so it's...
I think, yeah, and Chris McFinnan, who was, I can't remember what the position was, has passed away. I did get an email about that. They'll be in a state of flux again.
Okay, any questions on any of those two? I guess we'll go around the room, so I'll start with you again, John.
It was mentioned we had a chamber meeting just the other night, and I do believe they don't meet July, and August, while I'm separating, so it would have been back in June, and I wasn't meeting then, but I can, um, they're not going to go forward with the ears-to-you awards night. Not going to go, too many, too much volunteer time is needed, and not enough people stepping forward, so it's going to be on hiatus for a year, I understand. And they put a new ad out for someone to replace David Wade as assistant, administrative assistant, but that'll be open. That hasn't closed yet, has it? Okay, and No Joy Use Meeting, fresh is on Wednesday, and I've got the pool meeting Wednesday, so you might want to consider it.
Wednesday, I've got some ways.
Just will have some there, I guess. MPC is next week.
Okay, any questions for John? Hearing none, but Paul?
Is it BBDS, no quorum? Library Board, approved the new logo, Catherine Abel. Going ahead with the proper fire doors that were recommended, doing that through the town, Stuber just going to organize that. And exploring some new ideas for fundraising. You know, new secretary. Golf course, there's actually a request into, for the town to co-sponsor a grant for the three-hole. Total rounds were up 4.6 percent. Net income is down 12.66 percent. Expenses are up largely due to the increased water, the weather controller, and the overtime involved with that kerfuffle. And airport, there's one withdrawal from doing hangar, there's another application. They're in favor of doing community storage on adjoining property. And Shane Cock will be the new vice chair. That's all I've got.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Paul? Thank you. Moving on to Rick.
I just said, South Girl, we are sponsoring for the conference, and Business Expo that's coming up on the fourth, so we're going to be having supper with Mr. Harper.
Oh, the guy?
Yeah, it was kind of a shock. They were sponsoring a couple of the conference portions, and they gave us five tickets, and I got selected, so that's cool. And I'm going to be sitting in on the hearing for taxes on the eighteenth of next month.
Oh, we have one, dude?
For the colony.
Oh, for the county, okay.
First time in seven years I've used it. And that's it.
Okay, any questions, Rick? Hearing none, moving on to Lorna.
Apparently, I was supposed to have BBDS, but it sounds like it wasn't a goal for whatever reason. And I do have FCSS this week, and so I'm going to bring up, the pie social is on Saturday night at six o'clock at the Legion, for anyone wishing to go for supper in pie. I'm not sure how many tickets they've sold, I think they're $15 a person, or a family's 25. And the poverty simulation that's going to go on at the CRC, they do have their bones number to run it, but they would really like as many people as possible to come, and Wendy would really like to know who's coming by Wednesday. Is that the 27th? Yes. So was there things ahead of time, not after?
Okay.
What is the cost of that? Simulation, nothing, it's free.
Just early.
Yeah, it's at eight o'clock at the CRC, and that was to do with when they could get the CRC.
Any other questions for Lorna? Moving on, George Lee.
I was at the same two that Paul was at, again, BBDS, no quorum, and Paul covered everything for the airport. That was it.
Okay.
Well, I've got an update on the 402 Center Street for council. It looks like the estate is going to be taken back over, it's due in court October 16th, and there was a request put to try to address the fence putting out in the alley, so they were in contact with insurance to try to get that. The rest of last week and the beginning of this week has been chewed up by nominations. And I've met with the union for the first part, told them the collective bargaining for the agreement, which will update council as to how that's going in Cameron, and I met with Derek Stamp, our benefit provider, to see if there was any changes that are going to be brought forward from them, and it looks like they're going to be able to hold the rates that we currently have, so that was my activity for the last...
Okay, any questions for Kevin? Okay, the only one I have was SEWA, I met last Friday in Toshu. We have a couple of people that are stepping down from SEWA board because they're not going to run the end for the election. And we did have a bit of a discussion that, you know, from some of the areas, maybe they should be, if they're interested, if they want to stay on SEWA, get their community to appoint them, as, because of the same issue that a lot of communities have of forms. So they're going to take it back to their communities and see what they say, and go through your organization, and try to see. The, there is a bit of a move in the north, like up in the Olds area, for more of the municipalities up there to join SEWA, so we'll see what happens after election. Mayor Judy Doll is not running again this year, so it's going to be a kind of a shock for Judy. But anyway, the other thing, too, is that if you go on the SEWA website, they are doing now briefing notes after the meeting, so meeting briefing notes, so it just kind of highlights what happened at the, at the meeting prior to the minutes being approved. So instead of, you know, doing a unapproved draft minutes, they're going to go to a briefing note, so they're going to try and see how it works. The University of Alberta is working on the transportation study, they're supposed to have the first draft done, they're not quite done it yet, so they've asked for an extension on the first draft. Pendam Institute is waiting for the first draft to be done so they can critique it. And the only thing that we've got right at the moment is that Pendam Institute has looked at the, the study on, that was done by HDR, which was engineers for SEWA, and they believe that the estimates that greenhouse gas savings is low, substantially low, from what they, what HDR recommended. They recommend, you know, let's say, 10, and they believe that it'll be about 50 of savings, so, so it's substantially low. HDR knew it was low, but they want, wanted to be conservative on it, so it's just another feather in the cap that advantages the waste of energy over. factor that the capital advantages of waste energy over. And then we heard too that there's only four landfills that have monitoring on in the province of Alberta. And there's only one in the city Calgary, and one in the city Edmonton, and two girls that have monitors of what the CO2 that it's evening, you know, is not. So, that was kind of interesting fact that, you know, the, some were trying to say, well, you know, we need to wade against this monitoring, but how can you wade against when there's only four out of 200 sites that are being monitored? Well, now, yeah, Seawo, it's come along again, we all thought that it might be more closer to be that, but with the change in government and change in philosophies, nobody really wants to move forward, but I, I think the present government's not interested in putting more holes in the ground and burying it anymore either, so I think that it's going to move forward, but it's had a slower phase than what. The AGM for it is going to be in November unless the, the site and the transportation isn't done. But if it is done, it'll be in November, and everybody's welcome, even if you're not a counselor, you're interested in participating and finding out some information. It's planned for November the 24th at Champion, but we'll know more once the, the date, that's, she's going to send out a save the date so that anybody has an opportunity to, to pick, you know, save that date if you're able to go, so. Other than that, that's all I have, unless somebody has some questions. Okay, does anybody wish to move?
I think so.
Okay, Georgia Lee. Any question on Georgia Lee's motion? Hearing none on the paper. Okay, moving on to bylaw number 1464-17, which we had our public hearing for.
I'll make the second motion.
Okay, John moves the second reading. Any question, we'll do a tally on this one. So, John moves the second meeting, any question on John's motion? Hearing none on the paper. It's carried. Okay, moving to the third reading, Rick moves it. Any question on Rick's motion? Hearing none on the paper. It's carried. Okay, so that's in place, and thank you very much. And thank, thank the members that sat on the committee and, and worked on that, that was great. I know that they met, met a few times and, and same with Nancy and the staff for, you know, trying to get it all and put together, so thank everybody for participating in those. Okay, moving on to new business, this is one that Paul mentioned earlier, in his report on the golf course, asking for us to sponsor this.
There is no cost to the town.
Being that it's a community foundation grant on the last bridge, we've done one before, we just have to agree to be a partner on it.
Yeah, well, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, the only question I have is, is the list running to conflict with the pool fundraising idea? Is that something they're already applying for? And that they'll conflict with each other?
I don't think that they're going through the community foundation, the, the community foundation has several small grants that they do, and that's what this is part of.
So, like, you know, there are some grants that we can only apply for two of them or whatever.
That's right.
I think that's what we need to, is that?
Yeah, no, no, this won't conflict.
Okay, now, look, Laura moved this, is there...
I think it's a great use of that space.
Any, any other questions on the, on the application or whatever? So, are they, have they done the paperwork for it, I guess?
No, not yet. They're waiting on approval from the town.
Do we have to, as a town, hold the funds and dis, discharge them?
Yes, most likely.
Okay, so it's still Laura's motion? Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none on the paper. It's carried. Okay, moving on to the KDA hole, this one here was thrown on agenda, depending on what happens tomorrow, but we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to go over the first part of the draft and budget.
So, so we have the first draft and budget put together for the upcoming, all the department heads had a chance to go through it, so we wanted a chance to go through it with council or normal. When there isn't an election, is the first part of October, the idea was, if we have an election, we go through it in October with the current council and then go through it again in November, in the beginning of November for a new council. Having said that, with the nominations, the way they have, we won't normally tell tomorrow morning if we have an election, so the October 2nd meeting would still be good for feedback for the counselors that are departed and, because you've dealt with it before. And if we do not have an election on the 2nd, or, sorry, on the 16th, then it would be a good meeting to, to invite the newly elected counselors and to possibly hold the organizational meeting, that, that do the swear again.
There was also a discussion too, is that at the committee of the whole meeting, we could potentially discuss all the committees, so that present counselors have an opportunity to say, you know, whether this, this committee should stay or be removed. And of course, it'd be up to the next council to remove them or keep them and say, because they're the ones who are going to be removed from it. But sometimes it's nice to have that meeting for the present counselors to say, you know, this is a committee that I think we should participate in, or a committee that we should...
Now, just a question on that, if you're, if you want both, both sets, are the old council, I'm the new council, committee of the whole, it's got to be held first and then the organizational meeting after?
Correct.
Because we actually, with myself leaving, I can't be part of that organizational meeting.
That's right.
Well, you can, you can be part of it.
I can sit out there.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Look back bleachers there.
Yeah, you can throw the tomatoes in the...
Wave, wave your hands in the air and hope that somebody addresses you?
No, you're, you're right, John, but we just thought that it was an opportunity to address the, the budget process.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure it was that way, because we get the organizational meeting first. I can't be part of the budget part.
That's right, yeah, because you're in until the organizational meeting.
Until the organizational meeting.
You can, I think, I believe by the MJ actually wait.
You, you can wait, you can wait till the election date, yeah. That's the reason for calling this meeting, is to try to put that in order.
And, and then we do have that meeting with the county.
On the, yeah.
On the fifth too, so.
So, this was to preliminarily have...
Some of the discussions.
Open discussion about the budget before we go into the joint meeting with the county councils, so that you're aware of what our overall budget looks like when you start looking at the jointly funded stuff.
Okay, so any comments, questions, you guys have any issues with...
October 2nd, pending the results tomorrow.
So, somebody wish to move that we have our committee of the whole and all? Okay, and again, you know, please, please think hard and long about the committee's structure too, and so that we can make recommendations to, of what direction we want to go from there, you know, if there's some committees that you think should be deleted, why, and so that we can have a...
Is this at Central Park?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll send out an invitation and depending on if your motion is to include the nominees, I'll send out an email to everybody once we get that information.
Okay, any further question, comment? Hearing none on the paper. It's carried, thank you. Notice the motions, we're hearing none, management reports, we have none, so, yes, that's the end of our council meeting, and we're going to, we need to go to camera, so unfortunately, we have to ask everybody to... Well, yeah, CC. Okay, somebody wish to move us in camera?
Rick did.
Rick did, sorry. Thank you.
I'm bringing in jury.
Next week it'll be, should hope it'll be camel, should come in, Janet come in?
Yes.
Should I get rid of the camera?
I need to show hands.
Oh, all in favor, oh, sorry. Shouldn't have to be doing two things at once.
Wanted to make sure that camera's all in all hope.
All? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none on the paper. It's carried. Okay, the first one was on the benefits to the Rogers Communications Site, somebody wish to...
We did this direct administration to contact Rogers about the rent amount remaining the same, and the council will consider the additional extensions as a separate line item.
Okay, so Rick moves up. Any questions or comments on Rick's motion? Hearing none on the paper. It's carried. And then, letter to...
And, uh, motion to direct administration to negotiate with the QB for the collective agreement as per the town's policy.
All, okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none on the paper. It's carried. Joinment.
Should you put your hand up?
Any questions on Laura's motion? Hearing none on the paper. It's carried. Thank you very much.